Well, good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. And everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Wendy Vance as Treasurer Pro Tem for the purpose of recording the minutes of the April 1st, 2025 regular meeting. Move by Ms. Saxons, second by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, please.
Saxons?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Briskie?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Briskie?
Here.
For Haines?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Saxons?
Here.
Mr. Vaca?
Here. Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove?
The agenda is final.
Right into the superintendent's report.
Okay. This has been an exciting afternoon already, and there is nothing more exciting than recognizing these incredible people of our community, our students and our staff members. And I would like to begin tonight's superintendent's report by inviting Anthony Oliva, Sergeant Demir, not going to try the last name, and John Luckum, right from our service department, to come forward.
So we would like to thank the North Ridgeville Fire Department, North Ridgeville Police Department, as well as Public Works Department. They hosted a basketball game between the three groups. And working for Public Works, I'd like to proudly say, Public Works took it to them. But in the process, they raised $1,300 that they then donated to North Ridgeville City Schools to help with any of the students that had an outstanding lunch set. So I'd like to thank all reunions for coming together, and we really appreciate it.
Frank, Anne, do you want to get in?
Hey, Fire, just so you know, we did let everybody know the Public Works won.
All right. Frank, one, two, three.
Do you want him in?
I want Frank to come up. All right, so ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, I'd like that wasn't enough. And so generous of all of our teachers. We appreciate you so much. We also have Lacy Rufford, and our friends from Between the Bun, who held a fundraiser and also for the same reason, donated to our swing, Alana. And so Lacy and her family held a fundraiser at Between the Bun, offered raffle baskets, and were able to donate to our schools $2,000 to help our artists. Thank you so much, all of your family. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So many good things happened here.
Thank you. Okay, so let's continue this evening. I'd like to invite to the podium Ms. Andre Advance, Principal of ECLC, who's going to present for Two Students of the Month. Ms. Advance.
Good evening, everyone. I had the pleasure tonight of introducing our Two Students of the Month. The first student that we will start with is Liam Rolano. And Liam is in Ms. Mercado's preschool classroom. Liam, can you wave your hand? Liam's, Ms. Mercado said, and she's here tonight, thank you for joining us, that Liam has shown progress this year in school, in communicating with others, engaging with play with friends, and being more confident by participating in the classroom routine. Liam is now able to regulate his emotions and join in activities with his peers. He has become a great helper and is always excited to have a classroom job. Ms. Mercado says she's so proud of his skills that he's accomplished this year, and she's excited to watch him continue to grow as he transitions to kindergarten next year. Great job, Liam. Our next student of the month is Annie Carver. Annie, can you wave? Annie is in Miss Misery kindergarten classroom. And Miss Misery says that Annie has been an exceptional role model in class, showing kindness, enthusiasm, and wonderful eagerness to learn. We are so proud of Annie's accomplishments and her positive energy she brings every single day. Congratulations to Annie on this well-deserved break. I'll bring it over to the Principal at Liberty.
All right, you have to start by just making friends. Everybody, you can say hi. Hi, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing our Two Students of the Month at Liberty. We have two first grade students tonight. First, I have Christopher Pinkerton. Say hi, Christopher. My first teacher is here tonight, Mrs. Wigan Ward. She wrote that Christopher has grown so much this year. He is a hard worker, and he gets really excited to share what he is working at. He tries to be a good friend to others and has really embraced our classroom friendship challenge. Keep up the great work, Christopher. We are so proud of you. And next, I have Eli Vaca. He is a first grade student in Miss Ward's class, and she is here tonight as well. Can you pick that up, please?
She can't pick that up for us. Thank you.
There you go. Show it on your screen. Eli has worked so hard and gives very best effort every day. He is kind, caring, and has such a big heart. We are so proud of all your hard work this year. Keep up the amazing work, Eli. There you go. And next, Mr. Sullivan from EnRac will introduce his Students of the Month.
That young man has some enthusiasm. It's great to see everybody this evening. EnRac has four Students of the Month, so I appreciate your patience as we go through them. And I will call each student of the Month up individually, so we don't have too many people up here. Our first student of the month is Kayla Conrad, fourth grader. Come on up, Kayla. I'm going to say some nice things about Kayla. Kayla, here's what your teachers have said about you. Kayla is a hardworking student who is always polite and respectful. She walks into the classroom with a smile and a morning greeting. Kayla is always prepared for class, raises her hand to participate in class discussion, and listens as others speak. She is definitely an awesome example of being Ranger strong. Keep it up, Kayla. Our next student of the month is Mason Braithander. Let's welcome back. Our next student of the month is Case Moen, sixth grader. Come on up, Case. Case, here is what your teachers said about you. Case consistently demonstrates outstanding dedication and responsibility. He is always on task, prepared for every challenge, and goes above and beyond to help his classmates. His hard work, positive attitude, and commitment to excellence makes him a role model for other students. Keep up the amazing work, Case. We are so proud of you. Congratulations. Our next student of the month is Lauren Farney, eighth grader. Come on up, Lauren. Lauren, here are some amazing things that your teachers said about you. When you picture a Ranger strong student, you picture Lauren Farney. She welcomes everyone with a smile and is very respectful to all of her peers and teachers. She takes pride in her work, puts in her best effort daily, and strives for success. Lauren, we are so proud of you. We know you will do great things in softball and your high school career. Congratulations. Our last student of the month, Mason Braithander. Mason, here's what your teachers said about you. We have nominated Mason for showing Ranger strong attributes. Mason demonstrated growth this year by actively engaging in his lessons during whole reflection. He has proven his ability to learn, especially during that time, where he completes the tasks asked of him and is a leader to his peers. Mason is a joy to be around and a great friend to those around him. Mason, congratulations on being student of the month.
Hello. I am very excited to introduce two Students of the Month to you today. One of them is here with me, the other one is joining on Zoom. So our first student of the month is Alex Plas. Alex is a joy to have at school. As a matter of fact, I would hire her if I could. She is in fourth grade and was nominated by her teacher, Coach Rolsec, but she literally will take on anything that she sees needs to be done at school, and she will do it. So this is what Coach K had to say about Alex. Dependability is the perfect description for Alex. She is always prepared and ready to help. If we have a guest coach, I always know I can depend on Alex to help them access our slideshows and get the material they need for the day. She shows kindness and respect to her classmates and coaches. Thank you, Alex, for all your help and for being Ranger strong. Our next learner of the month is Shane Hayes, and he is joining us on Zoom. And he was nominated by Coach DeCisio. This is what Coach DeCisio had to say about Shane. Shane is not only known for his kindness and great sense of humor, but also for his unwavering work ethic and curiosity in the classroom, especially when it comes to science. He's always eager to dive into new concepts. As a natural leader, he leads by example, using his humor and inquisitive nature to inspire his peers and create a positive, engaging environment for everyone. Keep up the awesome work, Shane. I am so proud of you. Now, I'm going to introduce Mr. Mueller, who will recognize our high school students of the year.
Mr. Mueller is making his way up. Family, I just want to remind you that there will be an opportunity for photos of all of our Students of the Month. If you can hang out, we'd love to capture the memory for you. Thank you. Mr. Mueller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We got nothing tonight. Sorry. You know that's an April Fool's. And you know that, you know that April Fool's Day is celebrated in many cultures around the world, and it comes from a variety of sources, but the most popular interpretation of April Fool's Day has to do with the change from the Julian calendar invented by Julius Caesar, which had New Year's Day on April 1st. And I think Julius Caesar wanted to be remembered more for the calendar than the salad. And Pope Gregory the XIII, the Pope of Western Christendom, who held a lot of sway in the world, more so than current religious leaders, who decided to align New Year's Day with the winter solstice so that it lined up better with religious kind of events. And those news didn't travel fast, and those people who continued to celebrate New Year's Day on April 1st were referred to as April's Fools. So this Board of Education and our audience usually knows that I always have something to present. And the best thing about what I have to present are the North Ridgeville High School Students of the Month. And this month is no exception. Our first student of the month, Casey Melvin, could not be with us tonight because we, we had the audacity to conflict with Rangers girls softball. You can't win that. We are the three-time defending Southwestern Conference champions running, and this is Casey's senior year, which would mean today that Casey is at the back. It just came to me. Casey is a senior. She's been involved in varsity softball, as I said, for all four years. She also has been involved with Champions for Life, Prom Committee, Spanish Club, and other leadership events. Her favorite class is Anatomy and Physiology, and she enjoys hanging out with her friends, family, and softball teammates in her spare time. She will be attending the Ohio State University in the fall, majoring in Health and Rehabilitation Sciences, with the hope of eventually becoming a physical therapist. Congratulations to Casey Melvin. So our next student of the month is North Ridgeville High School senior Kyle Miller. And Kyle is also, four years basketball? Three-year letter winner on our basketball program. He's our point guard. He is in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes and is a member of the National Honor Society. His favorite class is Strength and Conditioning. His favorite hobby? Basketball. His dream college? Bowling Green State University. And his dream job is a successful job in the finance field. Sounds like a great high school athlete. Wouldn't you agree? He's really good. And he has brought us a lot of joy at home games, in, in our gym. But that's not why he's being recognized. Kyle Miller is an outstanding student. I looked at Kyle's records when I was considering who's going to be nominated, and I went back. I went all the way back. Every record that we have for Kyle Miller, in every course he's taken, in every quarter. One quarter, what'd you get? Dang it. Every course, every quarter for his entire career, educational, not high school, A for Kyle Miller. This young man is a star. Believe in yourself forever. He is a great teammate. He cares more about the team and his teammates than he does for his own glory and gratification. And the entire high school is proud of him. And this entire community is proud that we have young men and young women like Casey Melvin and Kyle Miller, our Students of the Month.
Mr. Mueller always makes it so difficult for me. But I do know that we could agree on one thing. We have excellent staff in this building, and that is what I get to recognize on behalf of the Board of Education every month. And that is evidenced by how many teachers we have in the crowds this evening who are here to support their students who were just recognized. So congratulations to all of our students, and I thank you to our staff. And I have two special staff members this evening that I would like to recognize as our March Staff Members of the Month. Our first month's award winner is Mrs. Caitlin Carlo. Mrs. Carlo was hired in July of 2013 as an Intervention Specialist. She currently works in our ABLE classroom at the high school. And she has been instrumental in starting our ABLE Not Label program. Caitlin has also taken on our key help advisor and is teaching our students the importance of volunteering. Caitlin has been nominated by many, but one of her colleagues shares the following. Caitlin Carlo is the most motivated, hardworking, and humble teacher. Her title teacher is just the beginning of what she does daily. She is also an entrepreneur, curriculum creator, graphic designer, social media manager, nurse, intervention specialist, and inspirational leader. Not only is she an amazing intervention specialist who creates and implements differentiated instruction so students of all ability levels can succeed, but she is also the founder and director of ABLE Not Label. Caitlin's vision and work ethic launched the ABLE Not Label into superstardom. And not only do students learn employability skills for their future, but they also raise funds to host school-wide events and field trips so the students can practice social and independent living skills. Congratulations, Caitlin, and thank you for all the input. Our second employee this evening is this is Amy Offman. Amy was just hired this September 2024 as a Secretary at the Academic Center. Prior to her hire there at NRC, she worked at PNC Bank and received her bachelor's degree in Business and Accounting from the Cleveland State University. Mrs. Offman has been, has also served important volunteer work as a parent. One of Amy's colleagues had this to share about her. Amy has been a wonderful addition to the EnRac 5A office. She comes into work happy to be here every day. She has been doing an amazing job with coverage and always treats everyone with respect. She isn't afraid to jump in and help where needed, and we are so happy that she is here with us. We have been very fortunate to have Amy as a member of our office team, and we thank her for all that she does. At this time, I think we're going to break for pictures, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, everybody. As you can see, we have some amazing students in North Ridgeville City Schools. And we have the most passionate, caring staff you could ever hope to be educating in our children. They're all absolutely amazing. So we'll go ahead and take a brief recess. Actually, one more thing. Ms. McCarthy, you have an announcement this evening. Do you have that?
Just want to make sure that everyone is aware of the recognition that was recently received by Liberty Elementary School. And I don't know if Superintendent Misery wants to speak a little bit more about that or our principal, but I think it's worth recognizing.
So recently, as Mrs. McCarthy said, Bree Polio, Principal of Liberty Elementary and Assistant Principal Jennifer Zell, worked closely with our Curriculum Department, Stacy Rocco and Dr. Heather Miller, to find themselves to be one of 47 elementary schools in Ohio to be recognized under the Governor Science of Reading Recognition Program. And we are so incredibly proud of the work that the Liberty staff are doing. It is hard work, but it is work that is teaching our students lifelong skills of reading that truly will change their lives. And Mrs. Polio, I know you are in the audience. If you would like to say anything, feel free. You don't have to. But I do think it's important that we recognize the hard work that the staff of Liberty, along with our Curriculum Departments, have been doing, and again, to be one of 47 schools recognized in Ohio is pretty outstanding. So congratulations, Bree. Congratulations, Jennifer Zell. Thank you for the board. No, I did not have any plan. Thank you for the board. Thank you to our Curriculum Department. Dr. Miller is not here right now.
She's here. Maybe she's there.
But especially thank you, I think, to our staff, to our teachers. I was new to Liberty last year as an Assistant Principal. This is my first year in the principal role. Seeing all that our teachers do to give our students high-quality literacy instruction, all the activities and lessons planned, time and effort that they put into it, it truly goes to our staff and our teachers, our profession, even supporting students with those things and supporting our teachers. So thank you to everybody for the support, but really thank you to our, our staff and our teachers and then families as well for just constantly giving us that support to do what's best for our kids. So it's a great honor. Thank you.
Okay, so now we are going to take a brief recess at the conclusion of the pictures. If you'd like to make a bolt to the parking lot, everyone is welcome to come back to the meeting, but I promise it's nearly as fun as students ever. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Here's an opportunity of hearing of the public. If there's anybody in attendance this evening that would like to address the Board of Education, now's your opportunity. If seen none, now we will move into something else. Education report, Ms. Saxons?
We've won agreement for consideration in the education report. This is an agreement to renew our multi-year contract with the Educational Service Center for the 2025-2026 school year. This is the first reading for this item. The second reading and consideration for approval will be of the April 15th regular meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Saxons. Communications report, Mr. Briskie.
Sir, here we go. It is recommended that the Board of Education give the following gifts of appreciation. Those we gave towards student lunch assistance are the City of North Ridgeville Police, Fire, and Public Works Departments, $1,300. Between the Bun, $2,000. Jessica Fellers, $100. And the ECLC PTA donated $400 towards the Lunch Account City ECLC. The North Ridgeville Band Boosters gave $1,385 to purchase two Model 9 podiums for the marching band. Paige Ola donated a gently-used Ludwig percussion kit for the NRHS band. Liberty PTO, $330 for staff appreciation lunch and snacks. Liberty PTO, $330 for staff appreciation lunch and snacks. The NRAC 3 to 4 PTO, $372 for snacks during test. Those it donated towards, or sorry, these are the RHCPT contributions for school nurse supplies, $20.98. Immersion shirts, $2,014.50. PBIS prizes, $150. Staff appreciation, $86.53. The ECLCP TA gave $55.16 for the preschool holiday concert props. $201.90 for the dinner for the ECLC staff during spring fabless. Spying our adaptable athletics event sponsors and their donations. Miller Home Title, $500. Newell Auction SBC, $100. Link Property Group, $200. Bob Schmidt Homes, $100. Casey O'Connor, EDS, $200. Call manufacturing, $250. BioThane coated webbing donated three tents and two coolers. NRCS Food Services provided 170 cookies. Legacy Roofing donated one tent and two dartboards. And Chipotle, donated, donated to a fundraiser, donated $279.05 for adaptable athletics. The Ohio Kiwanis, $100 towards the Be the Hero Project. The North Bridle Athletic Boosters gave $1,300 for royal blue starting blocks for the track team and $450 for a communication device for the softball team at high school. Liberty School fundraiser event sponsors were Kale Coating Incorporated, $50. Dress Healthcare Services, $100. Hazel Joy Memorial Foundation, $500. And Georgia Awick gave $100. We thank our community for their tremendous support for our schools and students.
Thank you, Mr. Grigsby.
That's amazing.
Building and Operations Report. We have one item under the Building and Operations Report. We have a five-year lease agreement for copier services with Xerox. This is the first reading for this item. The second reading and consideration for approval will be at the April 15 meeting. Human Resources Report, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. We have a number of items in the Human Resources Report, including the annual renewal of staff contracts, seven certified staff continuum contracts, 161 certified staff limited contracts, one building nurse limited contract, 70 support staff limited contracts, three certified staff leave of absences, one administrative staff benefit. One supervisor-manager benefit. One non-represented support staff benefit. This is the first reading on these items. The second reading and consideration for approval will be at the April 15 regular meeting. This concludes as part of the Human Resources Report.
And outside of there, we have other board business this evening. Mr. Haynes? You'll follow Mr. Haynes.
I'm in love with him.
You should approve it.
We have three items that we consider in the Human Resources Report. One administrative staff contract, one administrative consulting contract, one administrative staff contract addendum, one certified staff appointment, three support staff appointments, two substitute staff contracts, two administrative staff resignations, one certified staff resignation, one support staff resignation. I move to approve the Human Resources items in our meeting.
Second? Moved by Mr. Haynes, second by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any expression? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nease?
Yep.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Yes. Mr. Jackson? Yes. Mr. Boffa?
Yeah.
I was just so excited to approve them. I know. It is, it is hiring season, and so here we are, welcoming people and some returning Rangers and some new. So I would first like to recognize Kathy Brady. She would join me up here. We are fortunate to have Kathy joining us from the Avon Lake City School District. And so their loss is our gain. She is joining us at NRAC as a gifted teacher. Kathy is a very talented educator who is coming to us with years of experience. And she had received her bachelor's degree from Cleveland State, and she also has a master's in curriculum and instruction, and she also has a master's in educational leadership. And so all of those experiences, along with some of the things that she's done with STEM and her gifted students, had led us to selecting her as our top choice. And we're thrilled to have her working with our students. But we're also thrilled because she will be working with all of our students and all of our staff. So she will be benefiting all in this building and not just our gifted students. But welcome.
Thank you.
We have a little gift for you. We get a little signing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. I'm truly honored to be a part of North Bridle City.
And then for exciting news to share on our North Bridle High School Principal search. So we would like to announce this evening and with the board's approval, Mrs. Megan Pignite is going to be our next principal of North Bridle High School. Please. I'm going to read because I want to give it the due diligence that it deserves. I'm so excited. We hired Megan as an assistant principal two years ago, and she has just grown tremendously and was a great asset to us then and has really led us to this, you know, position. I would like to thank all of the candidates that we had. It was a great experience going through the candidate pool. For those of us that got to meet them, it was such a, it was a, it was a very wonderful group of educators. And so, but Megan, you know, her being our internal candidate and just so skilled with what she does and allowing us to continue some of the great things that are happening in our high school. And she sees the vision for what we want in a high school and what we want for our students, most importantly. So we're excited to have her and for her to build her team as we would have an assistant opening now that we're moving up. So we're, we're very excited. You know, some of Megan's strengths, she has established some very positive relationships with our staff, works very well with them. Her attention to detail is just something that is impressive. And, you know, I have all these other things I can do. But I can't see without you. She makes decisions based on what is best for kids, and I always feel that that is the most important, you know, part of being an educator. And so we're thrilled to have her, and we would love for her to officially come on board.
And a brand-new high school in three years.
Oh, yeah. And then I will seek a post one, too.
Okay.
My mom's ready. Congratulations. Just so excited to work with all of you and, and make this amazing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting. Moved by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Haynes. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy? Yes. Mr. Nease?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Boffa?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.